Welcome, everybody. Thank you so very much from the bottom of my heart for coming out tonight. We worried we weren't going to get a quorum, but I can officially declare that quorum is present and that we, the special town meeting for the town of Hanson, is now in session. As always, if you could please join me in the pledge of allegiance. If everybody could please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Also, at this time, I'd just like to take a moment to remember those who have served the town of Hanson that we have lost since the last town meeting. So for this meeting, please remember Carol P. Gagnon, Ernest E. Jutress, Peter Muse, Richard Chip Munsey, Della Snow, and Bill Straight. If we could just have a moment of silence for them. Thank you. Just a few procedural things. The rules for tonight's meeting will be found in Town Meeting Time, which is the official handbook for the Massachusetts Moderators Association. We also, if I could take a preliminary vote, some of the votes that we're going to take tonight require me determining the quantum of the vote. Sometimes it's two-thirds, sometimes it's nine-tenths. I would make a motion that I be allowed to determine the quantum of vote in those cases with the understanding that if anybody challenges my ruling, we are more than, I'm more than happy to have a hand count to confirm. Seconded, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And at this time, we have a special guest, our state senator, Michael Brady, just wanted to say a few words.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to be brief because I know you have important town business, and I'm glad you have a full quorum tonight. I just want to personally thank everyone who participated. We had an important election yesterday, and no matter who you support in the election, I'm glad we had a good turnout, and I'm grateful to everyone who participated in the election. A couple of things I just want to let you know. I'm going to leave my business cards up here if anybody needs to reach me, and I'm grateful I did what's successful in yesterday's reelection campaign. But moving forward, we're going to be filing new legislation for the next term, so any ideas you think we should be doing on revenue for the town, please don't hesitate to contact me. And just a couple of points of information. In the economic development bill that we just recently finally got passed in the state, we were able to get some landmark rehabilitation money that not less than $170,000 should be expended for reuse of the Plymouth County Hospital and revitalization of the historic Barney House, which I just recently toured the Barney House with Representative Conner a couple of weeks back. And then also, we were able to get some money for the fire department for screening services for not less than $33,000 should be expended for the Hanson Fire Department for cardiac screening services for students in the Whitman-Hanson School Districts in the town of Hanson. And in the APPA bill, we were able to get $200,000 restoration of the Junior High School Stocker Field in Hanson. So again, thank you for your indulgence and have a good meeting tonight. And I'm going to leave my business cards here. If anybody after the meeting wants to grab them, you're welcome to contact me anytime. And I do ask because I want to hear from the residents because revenue has been up in the Commonwealth. I know because of a bill that was passed in 1986, people are going to get some money back in there as a check for taxes that were expended. But also, moving forward, we want to know what, to hear from the residents, what you feel we should be doing in the Commonwealth, and I'm grateful to hear from the residents that have contacted me in the past. So have a great meeting and thank you for your indulgence tonight.
Thank you very much, Senator. And with that, I don't believe I'm listening to anything. Oh, we should talk about the numbers. I have the revenue numbers here. These are updated or you have?
Of course.
Thank you, sir. So before we get going spending some money, here are the available funds as of October 31st, 2022. In free cash, we have $1,490,984. In stabilization, we have $1,365,763. In the school stabilization fund, we have $187,637. In water surplus, we have $1,426,920. In the recreation retained earnings fund, we have $135,512. And in the solid waste retained earnings fund, we have $166,108. So those are, those are the funds that we're working with tonight. So on to Article One. I move that the town transfer $9,554.45 from free cash to pay for the following unpaid bills from the prior fiscal years is printed in the informational warrant. This requires a nine-tenths vote. Can we have a second? If you'll take a look, there are seven unpaid bills. Would anybody like to discuss any of them, or can we move to the vote? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article One signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required nine-tenths vote. Article One is adopted. Article Two. I move the town amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, classification and compensation, by deleting sections 11A through 11E in its entirety and inserting the new sections 11A through 11E as printed in the informational warrant. Do we have a second? By way of explanation, if you take a look at the matrix here on Article Two, you'll see the column listed 10, 3, 22. Those are not appropriations. Those are simply authorizations for a range so that the town officers can hire somebody in those positions within that range. Do we have any comments or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Two signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Two is adopted. Article Three. I move that the town raise and appropriate $28,705 to supplement appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting of May 2022 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 for various town departments as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. All those, or any questions or comments on Article Three? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Three signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Three is adopted. Article Four. I move that the town amend Article Six of the May 2022 Annual Town Meeting and amend the approved Recreation Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year '22 and to transfer $90,000 from the Recreation Commission retained earnings account to the fiscal year 2023 Recreation Operating Budget as printed in the informational warrant. Do I have a second? Seconded. You may notice that the original figure in the warrant is $80,000, and I made the motion for $90,000. Mr. Malisi, do you have an explanation?
Yeah, so Frank Malisi, 604 Brook Street. I would like to, as a citizen, not as a Recreation Committee member, change this from $80,000 to $90,000 with the additional $5,000 going to the salary lines, making that $123,000. And the other $5,000 going to the expenses, making that, we will be $153,800.
Madam Clerk, do you have that all down? All right. So you have made an amendment. Would you like to make an explanation?
Yeah, the explanation is we have the retainer today. We also got additional insurance bill for our $4,000 at the camp that we were not expecting after we paid our property insurance and liability insurance at the camp. So this would just give us a little leeway to pay that additional $4,000 insurance bill and still be within line of our budget. And I just want to know, after this $90,000, if this $90,000 passes, we still have $145,000 in the retainer and funds for the recreation, so we have a good cushion for next year.
Was there a second to that motion? Seconded. There was no amendment. There was no amendment. So it's the $90,000 is the one change in the informational warrant. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article Four signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Four is adopted. Article Five. I move that the town amend Article Seven of the May 2022 Annual Town Meeting to amend the approved Transfer Station Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year '22 and to transfer $239,752 from program revenues and $165,000 from retained earnings to supplement the funding of the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund budget as printed in the informational warrant. Do I have a second? Any questions or concerns on Article Five? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Five signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Five is adopted. Article Six. I move that the town transfer the following sums of money from free cash and to ARBA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, to be expended for the following capital equipment and capital projects for various town departments as printed in the informational warrant. Do I have a second? Thank you. I'm going to, much like we do in May with the budget, I'm just going to read off the lines, and if anybody would like to hold one of the lines for discussion, just yell out "hold," and we'll come back to it, all right? If nobody holds anything, then we'll just proceed to a vote. Line one. Accepted. Line two. Accepted. Line three. Accepted. Line four. Line four is held. Line five. Accepted. Line six. Accepted. Line seven. Accepted. Line eight. Accepted. So we had a hold on line four or five?
Yeah, I'd like, line four.
Line four. Mr. Malisi.
I'd like to pass over line four of the capital matrix. I don't think we need to spend this $53,000 this year from our free cash.
Any other comments or questions? So that's a motion to pass over line four. Is there a second to pass over? Pardon me? Seconded. Any other questions or comments on line four? Madam Clerk, do you need a motion in writing for that? What? Could you write out a motion on that? Yes, of course. Would the highway supervisor like to weigh in? Well, the purpose of it is... One moment. Could we just get that microphone up, Rachel? Yep, now it is.
Yeah, the purpose is to recycle the pavement instead of just patching it so the patched roads do not fall on the pot a few months later, make the patches last longer, so otherwise we have to have outside companies come in, and it costs $5,000 or $6,000 a day for them to come in, and we have used them in the past. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on line four? Yes, sir. And just introduce yourself and your address, please.
Sure. Joe Campbell, 150 Webbby Nav. We've spoken many times in the past in regards to the highway department coming to town meeting and properly requesting funding for the tools that they need in their department, not only as a citizen but also from the planning board. I know for a fact that the highway department spends way too much money outside of the town doing contract work, which is paid a prevailing wage, to do repair work on some of the roadways that we have here in town. And roadways here in town are, seem to be something of a flavor of the day recently. So if this is a tool, and it's definitely a tool that the highway department needs, we should be funding it. I do understand the request to be fiscal responsive, responsible, but also we need to be able to provide our departments with the proper equipment that they need, and that's exactly what this is.
Any other questions or comments? The amendment is now in the hands of the clerk. So all those in favor of passing over line four of Article Six signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The nays have it. Article Four is included in Article Six. Any questions or comments on Article Six in its totality? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Six signify by saying aye. Oh, did I miss somebody? Hold on. Yes, sir. Could you please come to the microphone? I'm having trouble hearing.
Richard Clifford, 311 County Road. I have some questions on the cameras. Are these stationery with swivel cameras? Who is doing the installation? Are the motion activated? And who will be monitoring the cameras? The police station, somebody else? Some questions like that. Can anybody answer those questions?
We have our... Would anybody like to respond? Mr. Mulberg? You can just go to that microphone right there.
Steve Mulberg, Director of Technology. So the cameras are for town hall, and there are going to be 10, and there are 16 cameras going in at the library. They're stationary cameras. They record 24 hours, 7 days a week, and they do have motion events. The only time the cameras will be accessed is if there is an event that we need to replay footage for.
So would you want to actually monitor the police station?
Not at this moment.
So the question was...
There is future planning on it.
Hold on, there's a kind, people couldn't hear both sides of the conversation.
I was asking if there was any monitoring going on by the police station or any future monitoring plans for those cameras? Because if they're just going to take a security tape or high drive tape of that activity that makes the camera come alive, you wouldn't know it until the next day. It's supposed to be for the security and safety of the staff and visitors and children. If they're not being monitored live, you're 24 hours out of sync by the time you look at it. Just asking.
Mr. Mulberg?
Well, the motion alerts are active, so if, if the library director chooses to receive them, any motion alert after hours will be, she'll be alerted during the day. I don't know if, if the police are going to be at any point in the future. We need to find a way to get them access to the cameras.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All those, okay. So any other questions or comments on Article Six? All those in favor of Article Six signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Six is adopted. Article Seven. I move that the town transfer $8,000 from free cash to retain the services of a qualified Massachusetts registered engineering firm to conduct a roadway and drainage infrastructure study of Litchfield Lane and Proud Foot Way and prepare a report of the findings for submission to the Hanson Planning Board and the Hanson Select Board. Do I have a second? Seconded. All those, wow, I'm jumping ahead. Any questions or comments on Article Seven? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seven signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Seven is adopted. Article Eight. I move that the town transfer $15,000 from free cash for the demolition of the building at 1157 Main Street. Seconded. Any questions or comments?
Evening. Name is Kathy Gerhart from 66 Bonne Hill Lane. I just want to know why and why now, considering our situation financially.
Chief Tompkins.
This building was the former Hanson Call Firefighters Association building, and it was a lease to the town. The association went to funk, and the building sat for a long period of time, and the board of selection put it under control of the fire department. Our first intent was to fix the building, repair it, and use it for storage, but once we got in there, because of the years that have gone by with nothing taken care of, and working with the building inspector, we found that the building really isn't usable. And so for safety reasons, we think it should be torn down. And now, because it's been sitting there for probably three years, and it's just locked up, so that's why.
Okay. So we...
Yes, sir.
So we think that it's important to do it, like, just considering financially, the way where, you know, the way the town is, we think that now's the most important time to do that?
Yes, I do.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Very good. All those in favor of Article Eight signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Eight is adopted. I move that the town amend the town of Hanson... Oh, we did? Oh, I did not know that. Actually, we have a motion to pass over Article Nine. Do we have a second? Seconded.
And, yeah, by way of an explanation, we received an email, I think, Tuesday, I'm not sure what day, Friday or Monday or, from the Impressed LLC folks, asking if we could wait to take this under consideration until our May town meeting. They are tied up with trying to finalize their license, and they felt that that would be a better time for them. They also thought by that time they would have some financial experience to share with us, AKA potentially will have sold some product and would be able to share those financials with us. At the same time, we've asked that the town assessor would also be able to provide us numbers that would tell us what the, the personal property inside the facility would be bringing in for additional taxes and what the property taxes would be on, on that facility. So we'll have more information financially, and it was what the applicant had asked, so...
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over Article Nine signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Nine is passed over. Article Ten. I move that the town transfer $40,000 from free cash to replenish the conservation fund. Do I have a second? Seconded. Any questions or comments on Article Ten? Mr. Clemmons.
Phil Clemmons, 46th Main Street, Chair of Conservation Commission. I would just draw everyone's attention to the handout that was available when you came into the building tonight, and I think the information there explains quite a bit about, not all, but part of why we do need to replenish the funds. We found a lot of, let's say, appreciative users of the conservation land in the last few years, and thus doing nothing but increase, and we'd like to have those experiences be safe, rewarding, and improved.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Ten signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Ten is adopted. Article Eleven will require a two-thirds vote. I move that the town place the properties identified as Assessor's Map 106, lots 7 and 10-1, and Assessor's Map 98, lots 10, 11, 12, and 15, into the care and custody of the Conservation Commission for Open Space Protection under Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution. Seconded. Any questions or concerns about Article Eleven? Mr. Clemmons.
As by way of further explanation, once upon a time, Cedar Swamps are very valuable. Everybody wanted a piece so they could go cut posts and lumber and things like that, and that's how the Little Cedar Swamp, which is west of Winter Street and east of the middle school, it's right over there, came to be divided up into many small lots. These days, it's most valuable as a wetland resource area that absorbs stormwater from many, many parts of town, including where we're standing right now, Shaw's Parking Lot, et cetera, and its great wildlife habitat, flood control, et cetera. But it's so divided up that we would like to be able to manage it as more or less one unit. If there's anything needs to be done or protected there, we'd like it to simply be primarily under the custody of conservation, which as a wetland it is anyway, but this would greatly simplify the process of oversight and protection of the resource.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eleven signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds vote. Article Eleven is adopted. Article Twelve. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $17,659.20 from free cash to fund an additional 16 hours per week for the conservation agent position, making the position full-time status at 35 hours per week. Do I have a second? Thank you. You'll notice once again that the number has been adjusted from the informational warrant. The Conservation Commission asked me to, to read the motion with that lower number. Mr. Clemmons?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The number is lower because the timeframe for this fiscal year is shorter. Originally, we were thinking from October of this year to next calendar year through end of June, which would be the remainder of fiscal 2023, 2022. This lower number recognizes that it would be more feasible just to plan for January to June, which is only six months, so it's one-third less amount of time, and therefore one-third less amount of money being asked for. And in terms of the background here, the conservation agent used to be full-time. From sometime in 1990s up until around 2010, it was, and there was a fiscal crisis, and many town departments voluntarily cooperated to take hits, and since then, most departments have been restored. Conservation has not. The agent is considered the head of the conservation department, the only non-full-time head of any town department. We find that in these days, now it's November of 2022, we have been receiving lots and lots of requests for services, and to only have the department open pack time is not serving the public well. Not only that, but the services that are required and the hearings and other things that we, that we're experiencing are becoming more and more complex. Stormwater and many other considerations now must be looked at. And just as one example, we had an application early in 2021. It took us six months to process that because every time the application was submitted or resubmitted, there were problems with the technical calculations for stormwater, and it just plain was wrong, and we ended up having to deny a project. We don't exist to deny projects. We'd like to approve them, but only if they're responsible and if they're correct. This project, once we denied it, went to the DEP. It went to the state. It was appealed by the applicant, and after spending one year, the state also agreed it should be denied, but during that year, more time was required by the agent to communicate with DEP, to respond to questions that came up during that year. In other words, the job is getting more complex, and more regulations, workshops are happening, and we can't have our agent go to those things or answer the phones or handle issues. And those of us who volunteer to be on the commission, we can fill in a little bit, but not very much. But we don't want the lack of services to stand in the way of redevelopment or serving the public.
Thank you. Mr. O'Sullivan.
Good evening. Joe O'Sullivan, 625 West Washington Street. I wasn't a butter to the program... I wasn't a butter to the pro... project that he just described. Very quickly, without getting into the weeds, somebody wanted to build 10 four-bedroom houses on six acres that were surrounded by 40 acres of wetland. That project passed through every board except the Conservation Commission, and through the due diligence of them, it went through appeal after appeal, and the DEP finally rejected it in a 14-page document that cited five different irregularities in what the company had proposed. They are, in fact, a homeowners' association, because they can use their judgment about the future impact of this. A four-bedroom house uses approximately a million gallons of water a year, by the way. And this one, we had a letter of concern from 75 butters on this, and it went through every board except the conservation, and they basically saved us from septic system failures everywhere and a lot of other problems with stormwater. So I, please, support this. They need to do it. It protects everybody in this room, so please support it.
Any other questions or concerns?
The Finance Committee, why they asked, I'm going to pass over.
The question from Ms. Murray was, why did the Finance Committee vote to pass over?
Mr. Moderator, it's... First point is that we are not going to dispute the needs of additional hours in conservation or other departments. We actually had a recommend... We voted not to recommend the article strictly on a financial basis. As we sit here today, our current operating budget, we are spending $283,000 more than the income we're taking in. This is just going to add to that, and you hear us talk about using free cash to fund operating expenses that are going to be there year after year after year. It's just not sustainable, and that was the basis for our recommendation.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 12, as read by myself, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 12 is adopted. Article 13. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $22,034 from free cash to be added to the select board's budget to hire a part-time administrative assistant in the select board's office for 15 hours per week. Seconded, any questions or concerns? Oh, Ms. Green? We'll hear from the town administrator.
Good evening, everybody. This position in the part-time, part-time position in the select board's office, we really saw the value of that these past few months when we had an intern from Bridgewater State work in the office. He was very successful at helping us look at policies, draft procurement, and do a number of different projects that only two people cannot do. What this position does also, we have a part-time planning administrative position, which is 19 hours a week. That position is unfortunately a revolving door type of position, where a person will come in, they're trained, they learn the job, and then they leave for a full-time job in the off... in the town. What if this position passes in the select board's office, what we're going to do is combine it with the position in the planning board office to make one full-time position. So that person will work 15 hours in select board office, 20 hours in planning, so it will cover the needs of both of the departments, and it will also create a full-time position that will encourage the person to stay with the town, so we're not a revolving door. So this is a very good thing for the town, for both positions, for both offices. I do ask you to support this. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Ms. Murray, if you could come to the microphone. Thank you.
I guess my concern would be that the Finance Committee voted to pass over this also. If you combine two positions into a full-time position, then you're paying health benefits and whatever else goes along with a full-time position. So I just question the fiscal responsibility at this point, if the Finance Committee could address that.
Findings, committee?
Sure. More of the same comment I just made, that, you know, it's additional hours, it's additional expenses, and in the current operating budget, it's additional deficit spending, because right now, we are not generating enough revenues to support our expenses at this point.
Any other questions or concerns? Yes, sir.
Ken Suize, 51 Madison. I was just wondering, just a quick question, Lisa, if there was any reason why we may not be able to acquire interns in the future? If you just said this job was being covered by an unpaid intern, wouldn't that be an option for the future as well?
Ms. Green?
Yes, there's always a possibility for interns. We may not always get an intern. Our office did pay 23 hours for the intern to come in, and Bridgewater also offered a stipend. That may not always be the case. We can certainly always try to do that, but it's a short period of time. So that person works on a project, and then they're off to something else, and they can always... They may get a job while they're working with us, so one day they're there, the next day they're gone. They don't always have the full dedication, so to speak. They're always thinking, oh, you know, what's my job going to be after here? And we did a lot of mentoring. It's a very fulfilling program, and I do look forward to having more interns. But if we have a person that's there every single day, that can help us answer the phones, look at emails, get communication out, and get some of these projects done, it really moves the town in the right direction.
Any other questions or concerns? Oh, I see people moving to the microphone. Who will get there first? Mr. Malisi?
I'll give it to Mr. Hayes.
I'll defer to Mr. Malisi.
One all night. Mr. Malisi, go ahead.
So it's a two-part question. First part is, I would like to hear from the select board why they voted to recommend this, but defer the Conservation Commission agent to town meeting. And then second part is, if we do get this part-time person in the select board office, will that person also be engaging in grant writing and things like that to get more revenue into the town on the back end?
Ms. Kettin?
Yeah, the reason that we voted to do this is, we have consistently been getting feedback from everybody that we have hired, even going back years before any of us were ever on the select board, that our office is understaffed. And when we did a competitive analysis of similarly situated towns, we found that there was not one town with the same population that we had, that only had a two-person office. Nearly everybody has at least two and a half people. We honestly felt that we needed three people, but we thought that that was probably an overreach at this point, and thought that it would be a modest approach to ask for a part-time person, and see how that works out, and see whether it started to stem the tide of the need that we can all see. And I can only speak for myself, but I will mention that the two new members of our select board were astounded with the amount of work that this office does, and were in a bit of shock that it's two people trying to keep, you know, keep things chugging along. So I think, you know, we recognize the timing's never going to be good for this, but what we don't want is a revolving door of a town administrator and administrative assistant, which causes us to get behind on very basic things like minutes. And, you know, this is a real situation. Then there's the onboarding. And what we're finding is, if you look around at surrounding towns, our brethren in Whitman, for instance, are looking at potentially having to hire a town administrator at upwards of 150, 160, they're even talking about 180. This is a very competitive, you know, environment right now for anybody in the town administrator position. We need to retain people. We do not want to continue to be the revolving door that we've been. So I don't know if that answers your... But that's my response, but others may have other responses.
And before I recognize him, I think this is the first meeting in recent memory where Mr. Hayes wasn't wearing Panther red and black, but, you know...
Ladies and gentlemen, as a former school committee member for 18 years, when I first got on the committee, you could do it with a card like that. Today, when you answer a question, it's a novel. You have immense, immense things for the town administrator to do and for the paperwork that we all want done. If you go onto Facebook, you see, why isn't this done? Why isn't that done? Because there's not enough man-hours. As you just voted on the Conservation Commission, they asked for someone to do something for conservation. I was against it until I heard Mr. O'Sullivan stating why it was needed. The same thing is needed in the selectman's office with the town administrator. Please support this small stipend position, so this town can move forward. As our lady chair just told us, it becomes more and more incumbent. This price of town administrators and revolving doors goes from 150, 160, 170, 180, 190. You need to keep people in this town employed. Please support this article.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, I would just like to add one more thing. You know, one of the things to piggyback off of what our chairperson and what Mr. Hayes has said, you know, one of the things that we can do is utilize interns, but at the same time, you're going to be onboarding and offboarding those folks during a valuable time. And one of the things that this town has had the luxury of having for a very long time was a very, very seasoned, very veteran administrative assistant that was able to fill in when town administrators were on leave. Since that time, we've gone through a handful of executive assistants, simply because the workload was too big, and she was able to do the job of essentially one and a half to two people, both hours-wise and knowledge-wise. I think it's an important investment for a couple of different reasons. The first is, you want to get somebody on board that is going to have some level of longevity, because you're going to want historical institutional knowledge of previous town meetings and just the inner workings of how municipal government works. You're also going to want someone that's going to be here with lasting power and involvement. Lastly, I think it's more expensive to have overworked and spread too thin employees versus the appropriate amount of investment and the appropriate amount of employees to ensure that things don't fall through the cracks. One detail that can be missed, which is what we talked about with the conservation agent, one detail being missed could have consequences in the hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars, I think, for this small price, and to be able to have people well-trained, well-versed, and be able to actually learn their job skills well, I think this is a worthwhile investment.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would like to ask people to vote for this also. My name's Peggy Westfield. I'm from State Street, and I'm the chairperson of a cultural council. When I took over that position, I was given tubs of information. I went to the town hall, and I said, I have tubs of information underneath my dining table. Where do they go? Nobody knew where they went. I ended up getting a draw at the town hall. I don't think that all that stuff should be under my dining table. Since then, the administrative assistant who helped me out has gone, so now we have another administrative assistant. I have another tub of information that I have to get to the town hall, and nobody knows where it goes. So I think continuity is a big factor here.
Thank you. I think we've gotten everything... Oh, yes, ma'am.
Corrine Cofato Winslow Drive. I'm a regular visitor at the town hall for various committees I'm on, and the previous town administrative assistant that Joe Weeks spoke of, she also stayed late, working till nine o'clock at night and working on weekends, which was not part of her job description. That's how the job got done. That's why we need this part-time position filled. Thank you.
Mr. Head...
Thank you. I just wanted to add that we have an opportunity, and I was talking to a group of guys today.
Do I need that?
Probably not. And I was talking to a group of gentlemen today that, in the five and a half years that I've been up here, Hanson has not been very proactive. We've been more of a reactive type of town. And you can't get, you know, $230,000 for a project from a grant writer if you don't have a grant writer that costs the town $70,000. So by putting a part-time position in the selectman's office, we have an opportunity to do things that we have never done. So I just want people to think about that when it does come time to vote.
Thank you, and I think we'll give Mr. Howard the final word on this.
Thank you. Don Howard from 860 Winter Street. I served the town of Hanson from 2008 to 2018. As a selectman. Mary Murray was there. Mary Murray was doing two jobs every week, and I often tried to get the selectman to give her a raise, and she never would take it. And I think this is a time that we start to recoup and get people involved, and pass this, please. All right?
End with that. All those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 13 is adopted. Article 14. I move that the town transfer $50,000 from free cash to the town-wide fuel account, which covers all town vehicles, including police and fire, gas, and oil. Seconded, any questions or concerns? I'm not sure this one really needs an explanation. All those in favor of Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 14 is adopted. Article 15. I move that the town transfer $74,000 from free cash for town-wide stormwater management and MS4 permit-related items. Seconded. And for those of you following along, the MS4 is the municipal separate storm sewer system. MS4, I like that. Seconded, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 15 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 15 is adopted. Article 16. I move that the town transfer $25,000 from free cash to the town-wide retention pond cleaning fund to be expended on retention ponds located on publicly-owned property in conjunction with and adhering to the town's stormwater and drainage MS4 compliance. Seconded, all those... Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm very sorry. Could you just come to the microphone, please?
Hi there. Molly McLeven, Squanton Avenue. I think the article needs to be amended to reflect the amount. This just says a sum of money. It doesn't actually say the sum.
That's a great point. Some of these figures were added late, so I made the motion with the sum in it, and just... It's a great point. The sum that we would be transferring from free cash would be $25,000, but that's... The motion is on the table, and seconded.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying.
But thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 16 is adopted. Article 17. I move that the town change the name of the Recreation Commission to the Camp Kawani Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Malisi?
Frank Malisi, Chair of the Recreation Committee. I just want to kind of explain why we're doing this. Currently, right now, the Recreation Committee as it stands does not have any jurisdiction over anything other than Camp Kawani. We cannot run recreational programs at the town hall or any of the schools or things like that. This change would more accurately reflect our responsibilities at the current Recreation Committee by naming it the Camp Kawani Commission. So the town has an opportunity, hopefully in the next couple of months, to create an actual Recreation Committee that'll go through the town and create recreation in the town. You know, and I'm not going to go too on about it, but I've gotten a lot of feedback from citizens as the chair of the Recreation Committee, asking, why is there no recreation in town? And I have to politely explain to them that the current Recreation Committee has zero jurisdiction on anything outside of Camp Kawani, and that should change. So I know people might be a little iffy about that, saying that the town is getting rid of their current Recreation Committee, but this actually gives the town of Hanson a broader opportunity... broader opportunity to create an actual Recreation Committee where we can perform actual recreation. The current recreation that's happening at Camp Kawani and that happened in the past and will happen in the future are still going to be there. We're still going to run Cranberry Cove. I just look forward in the future to having the Recreation Committee work with the Camp Kawani Commission to run more robust programs at the camp so the town can enjoy it. Also, the cove's getting... Hopefully getting redone in the next year, so I hope everybody comes down this summer and takes a look. We have a lot of people there. It's open for free swim right now, or I'm sorry, it will be in the summertime, so please come down. And we just did the landscaping in the front of the lodge, too. It looks awesome, so take a drive-by.
Everybody can join me for a swim right after the meeting. Hasn't stopped me in the past. All right. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 17 is adopted. Article 18. This requires a two-thirds vote. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Hanson with gender-neutral wording specifically by deleting the words "Board of Selectmen" and inserting in its place the word "Select Board" wherever those words appear. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? As you'll remember, we changed the name of the Select... The board to the Select Board at the May meeting. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds vote. Article 18 is adopted. Article 19. I move the town amend second... I move that the town amend Article 2-11, Section 1 of the Capital Improvement Committee General Bylaws of Hanson by changing the committee size from seven citizens at large to five citizens at large with two non-voting alternates, as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Mr. Malisi?
As the Chair of the Capital Improvement Committee, as well as the Recreation Committee, over the summer, we had an issue with the quorum before the last three members, I believe three members, got appointed. The Capital Improvement Committee is an extremely important committee in this town, just so everybody knows. No capital item can get funded if it... At our threshold, if it does not go through a Capital Improvement Committee, we are the ones who figure out, you know, any piece of equipment over 10 years of use and $35,000 that we'll bring to the town people and spend our capital money there. So the reason why we're doing this is because we'll have a better chance of getting a quorum if a couple of members leave, so we will not find ourselves in the same situation that we found ourselves in over the summertime.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 19 is adopted. Article 20. I move that the town amend Artic... I'm sorry. Madam Clerk is...
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. But the second before Article...
That's not required, right? I'm not messing up my amendment. The second before Article...
No.
Thank you. Just... I move that the town amend Article 2-11, Section 2 of the Capital Improvement Committee General Bylaws of Hanson by changing the limit for capital improvement expenses to have a useful life of five years instead of the 10-years list as printed in the informational warrant. Mr. Malisi?
So just a little explanation of why we wanted to do this as well. This was voted on by the Capital Improvement Committee. Adding... Dropping the current useful life from 10 years to five years gives the citizens at town meeting the opportunity to see exactly where their money's being spent on capital items. 10 years, $35,000 is a long time. Some equipment does not fall into that range that are also very expensive, vehicles mostly. So dropping it down to five years, we require anything that has a lifespan of five years and greater than $35,000 to be brought to town meeting so everybody can see it on the capital matrix that's available to the town.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 20 is adopted. Article 21. I move that the town amend Article 1-1 of the General Bylaws of Hanson by allowing town meeting and special town meeting to begin at 6:30 PM as printed in the informational warrant. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Malisi?
I'm so sorry. I want to go home, too. So I actually brought this in front of the Select Board as a citizen, not as a citizen's position, but as a citizen. There's a couple of reasons why I did this. As a father with three young kids, my kids are going to bed usually around 8:00, 8:30, 9:00. And if everybody remembers, the May Town Meeting, we were here until almost 11:00, 11:15. A lot of people had to leave because the kids were just running amok in the cafeteria. That's the first reason. The second reason is, it's not really an issue during the May Town Meeting, but during the October Town Meeting, it starts to get late. There's a lot of senior citizens around town that do not feel comfortable driving at nighttime, and if we can push the hour of town meeting an hour ahead, that'll give a good portion on to maybe finish off before the sun set and goes down there. So that's why I proposed this amendment. Thank you.
So it's basically town meeting savings time. Any other questions or concerns? Yes, sir. Could you come to a microphone, though? I know it's difficult.
It's very simple. The May meeting would be Eastern daylight time, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Okay. It's just because of the markets, so it's standard time.
That's an excellent point. In that case, you know, Mr. Malisi, how about if I...
So the actual change to the bylaw specifies 6:30 o'clock in the afternoon. It does not specify Eastern Standard or Eastern daylight time.
Very good. So therefore, I'm going to revise my motion and ask your indulgence. So I now move that the town amend Article 1-1 of the General Bylaws of Hanson by allowing town meeting and special town meeting to begin at 6:30 PM as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you. Excellent catch. All those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 21 is adopted. Article 22. I move that the town transfer the sum of $8,928.50 from free cash for the purposes of purchasing and installing street signs for private ways, set installation to take place on the public way where it meets with the private way. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any questions or concerns?
Yeah. Do these private ways have their own developments?
Actually, could you come to the microphone and just introduce yourself, sir?
I'm David Pell from Great Cedar Drive. We live in a development on a private road, and we put our own sign up. So is there any contribution towards that and the development on the private road that will be signed? Is this all us or the town, or is it the contribution to the private road that those owners live on?
Do we have a response or to the question?
I'm... Do you mind if we...
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. So I live on a private road. We chip in to pay certain fees for these signs to go up. We're still figuring out if you actually own our road or not, but the private roads, do they have... The people who live on that road, do they contribute to these signs, or is this the full purchase of the sign?
It's just the full purchase. There's no additional money.
So the people who live on that private road don't contribute?
Well, everybody who's a taxpayer and...
I understand that, but my point...
It's additional, like, betterment fee or anything like that.
Okay.
So to the private road.
Very good. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, could you come to the microphone, please?
I'd like to know why this is being presented and why we are voting on a sum of money that we don't quite understand the benefit to it? Because personally, right now, I live on a private way, and I don't understand the purpose of my list.
Ms. Kemmet?
Yep. I think the purposes that we've been hearing consistently from folks that are moving to town that are new, that they don't understand that they're living on a road that's a private way. We seem to have a lot of folks who don't understand what that means if they are buying the house on a private way, and there's a lot of questions around, you know, snow plowing and all that type of thing, and what the town's responsible for and what the town isn't. And so I think one of the things that the Planning Board had mentioned was that they thought that this would be a good idea for us to put... Just simply put a note, which you can see on many other towns have got this, just private way, you know, that it's literally just a plaque, like an additional placard on the existing street sign.
Yeah, well, I for one suffered that and still am, and I'm... I just don't quite understand why you can't post that stuff on your website and not on the streets itself. You didn't have anything on your website years ago. So now there's a little bit there, and I think that came from a suggestion that brought up... Was brought up at the Planning Board meeting, and you could also do the same for this instead of those kind of funds being dispersed.
Fair enough. Any other response or questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 22 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The chair isn't down. Fortunately, we have counters who will count up the votes. We couldn't get away with the whole meeting without doing this once. So all those in favor of Article 22, please signify by raising the yellow card you received when you checked in. Keep it held up high until you're certain the counters have heard that recorded your vote.
We have to reconsider our... Because it says the two alternate members...
Mr. Hayes reports 32.
It's supposed to be voting. I guess that was the intention of the...
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
43.
43. All those opposed to Article 22, please signify by raising your card now. 22. Mr. O'Brien?
44.
44. So six... Six... So by a vote of 75 to 66, Article 22 is adopted. We now have a motion from Ms. Kemmet.
Yes, I'd like to... I guess I'm making a motion to amend Article 19.
I think it's to reconsider.
Reconsider Article 19. Specifically, we still want to reduce the...
One moment. Could we have a second from Mr. Weeks? Explanation from Ms. Kemmet?
Yep. So specifically, we still want to keep the fundamental principle, which is that we're reducing the Capital Improvement Committee to five members, but we want to make sure that the two alternates, if you will, will be able to vote. And the way it's written now, it says that they will not be able to vote. It would be a similar arrangement to the arrangement that is on the Zoning Board of Appeals, so the two alternates would vote as needed if one of the full members was not able to vote or was not present.
All right. So I'm going to make... Oh, all those in favor of reconsidering Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 19 will be reconsidered. I will now attempt to make the motion. I move that the town amend Article 2-11, Section 1 of the Capital Improvement Committee General Bylaws of Hanson by changing the committee size from seven citizens at large to five citizens at large with two alternates as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 19 will be reconsidered. I will now attempt to make the motion. I move that the town amend Article 2-11, Section 1 of the Capital Improvement Committee General Bylaws of Hanson by changing the committee size from seven citizens at large to five citizens at large with two alternates as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 19 is adopted. Article 23. I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $60,000 to be added to the stabilization fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 23 is adopted. Article 24. I move that the town transfer $20,000 from free cash to be added to the regional schools' capital stabilization fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any questions or comments on Article 24? Seeing none. Just making sure. You don't want to say anything? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 24 is adopted. Now, Article 25 is our last article, but before we do that, I just wanted to do one thing that we don't do often enough. I wanted to give a special thanks to the Clerk's Office, especially Beth and Jean, and also to the wonderful people who act as our clerks that check people in for town meeting. We didn't get a quorum in October. We had to find another date that allowed us to use this space in the school. It wasn't easy. It took a little bit of time, and it ended up being the day after a major election. And so the poor Clerk's Office, they've been doing an amazing job doing an election and then a town meeting back-to-back. So once again, thank you very much. Article 25. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 to be added to the Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB, trust.